Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. Appreciate everybody being here. Like to do a roll call and I'd like to start with our two online. Andrew, are you with us?
Present Doc.
Okay, can you state your name?
Andrew Fraser.
Okay, Gay, are you on?
Yes, Gay, we're on Mac.
Can you speak into the mic too, please? Martin?
And Chuck, Chuck Emmert.
Sonny Colber.
Susan Fix. Suzanne Allen.
Paul Chernetsky.
Michael Faith.
Anne Claire.
Robert Zawedick.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting? That would be the two of the five o'clock meeting? Yeah, for tonight. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the, I think it's item three B. The minute state, we approved a six PM meeting for tonight, should read five PM.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
I move for approval as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes with the amendment on the time? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, so approved. Everybody has, should have, or are we going to have on the screen the new version, edited amended version? Okay, so does everybody have access to that? And those of you that are on virtual, you have access to the amended draft? Yes. Okay, we're good. Bobby, were you able to get it? Okay. So what we'd like to do, we approved it at the last meeting to go back to legal for some review. And just to keep the group updated, we did have an executive discussion on a few of the items with our city attorney, Joe, with myself, and with the Vice Chair Suzanne. We will go to those individually as we move through the document. There were only three items that were of some concern, that they had made some suggestions. Are there any questions right now? Sonny?
Chairman, I propose you go ahead and share those, and then we can go page by page, and you could say, did anyone have anything here?
Okay, I'll do that. And you can help, actually, I'll actually have Joe help me a little bit. So the first one has to do with the timing. I don't know that they're in order of the article, Joe. Can you go by the first one?
Yeah, they're pretty much in order. The first issue is conflicts and issues between Article Three, Section Nine, and Articles Eleven, Section Six. Three. Page five. And that's the induction of mayor and council into office. And then Article Eleven, Section Six is on page twenty page twenty. And that's the time of holding primary and general elections. So the issue and conflict we've come across is that the induction provision provides for the induction of the mayor and council on the, on or after January first. But the election timing, you guys left that up to a council decision to whether it would be a spring or fall election. So if you schedule a spring election, but you have induction in January, that doesn't, that's not the correct timeframe for that. The induction, if you're doing a spring election, the induction time would be the first regular meeting in June after the canvas of the vote from the May election. So there's that conflict. There's also the issue with leaving, with having Article Eleven, Section Six. Having that left up to council can cause issues because the council can change a spring or fall election based off of who's on council at that time. You could end up with a council that wants a fall election. And then the next cycle, you could end up with a council that wants a spring election, and they could go back and forth changing the election cycle, which would complicate and convolute the term issues and everything else. There's also the issue that the state legislature is doing, has done everything they can to force even charter cities to hold elections in the fall. When the fall election issue first came out, Tucson filed suit over it based off of their charter because they had a specific charter provision that they would do spring elections. And the court held that that was an issue of local concern, not of statewide concern. And so Tucson prevailed on that, and they were able to maintain their elections in the spring. After that case, the legislature went back and amended the statute and said, notwithstanding the holding of this case, and notwithstanding any charter provision, if the, essentially charter cities can still do spring elections, but if your spring election turnout is 25% less than the regular fall general election turnout, you're mandated to go back to fall elections. So they're really pushing everything towards fall elections. There hasn't been an instance where there is a charter that allows the council to decide, and I think if if that were to be challenged, that the, because the charter's silent on it, the state would prevail and say, no, you have to do a fall election. So I think the key here is, first, the board needs to decide if you, whether or not to mandate fall or spring elections for mayor and council. And if you, I know there's a number who want to consider the spring time period because that takes it off cycle. It's more of an independent ballot just for the mayor and council positions. The issue there that I discussed with the chair and vice chair is that you have a March-May election cycle. That is the same time period where the city budget is being established, and the city budget is voted on and approved at the end of June. So the issue becomes, you could have three, three new council members and a new mayor elected and seated in the beginning of June, and then they're required to vote on a budget that they had no, no hand in drafting, no ability to discuss. And that, in the past, and other municipalities that have had those situations, it's caused substantial issues because there are certain statutory timeframes that the city is under in adopting the budget. And that you have to do certain things within certain time periods. There has to be a certain number of public hearings, all of that. And having a new mayor and council seated right at that time period can cause substantial conflict and issues. Because then you've got a council that's being seated, and all of a sudden, they're, you know, they have to pass a budget that they didn't, that they didn't prepare or approve. And then the whole next year, you know, the argument is, well, no, you voted on the budget, but, oh, I voted on it because I had to, or, you know, we had to pass a budget. It wasn't my budget. So the benefit of having the fall election is that those individuals are seated in January, and that's right before the budget process typically starts. Most cities will start preparing their draft budgets in February, March, age probably even a little earlier than that. But, so that way, those new seated individuals have a hand in drafting that budget because that's one of the key things that the mayor and council do as an elected body, is establish the budget and spending limitations for the municipality. So that's one consideration to think about for the spring time period. It's just a consideration, just throwing it out there. But I think what we need to do is we need to clarify if the board wants once a fall or spring. I think we need to identify, it's either got to be fall or spring, and that's totally up to the board. And once we have that decision, then we can correlate the other issues in language in the in the draft. For example, the induction. The induction language, I would suggest, would just we either keep it, if you decide to go with a fall election, we can keep it as after January first.
Well, Joe, why don't we decide how we want to, if we want to do spring or fall, and then let the date come in Article Three? So let us figure that out. And then do we need to make a motion about this and then have discussion, Chair?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Have the motion to discuss the specific issue.
Not until we get to make that decision. We can just come together as a group and make that decision as well. I'd like to hear thoughts. Kenny, do you have any thoughts on that? Okay.
And then my only question would be, do you want to put something in here that says the council shall maintain the vote? The ability to change the election of the spring can only be done through a charter amendment, and the city maintains the ability to do that. Do you want to specify that the city retains its ability to change the election cycle if they want to through a charter?
You don't have to specify that because the city has the ability to modify the charter through an election for essentially any provision, so you don't have to specifically call that out.
Suzanne?
No, I completely agree. I think that one of the reasons why we wanted the flexibility of the charter was to determine the election cycles. But hearing all of these things, these pros and cons, it sounds like the prudent step is to have the elections in the fall so that we can avoid the budgetary issues that would arise with a spring election.
Gay or Andrew, do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree with what was just said.
I just have a couple of questions. So the first is on the state provision regarding 25% less. So in a typical fall election cycle, what is Litchfield's average turnout for, you know, votes cast versus eligible voters?
Do we know any, have you knows that?
I don't think we have those numbers.
We don't have anybody here right now from the city that could give us that number?
That we've been an all-mail-in ballot for a long time, which puts us at one of the highest percentages of turnout in terms of people who vote versus people who are registered to vote, not eligible, registered, right? So registered voters who vote are very high percentage because it's all mail-in.
I agree.
Okay. Andrew, anything else?
And then just as far as when the budget is passed, are we locked in just due to statutory requirements to June? Or if we wanted to have a spring election, could we have the budget passed in the fall?
No, it is statutory. The budget has to be done in June. Our fiscal year is July one through June thirty.
Okay, that sort of answers it for me.
So, I mean, we as a group, okay to just have it as the fall?
I have just a very simple question for Joe. Is the intent to have the spring elections to avoid confusion to the voters with all of the other items on a ballot? Was that the idea?
That's been the idea is that when you have a consolidated ballot in the fall, you can get what's called voter fatigue, where you have so many items on the ballot that they just go through and check off, or they get to a point where they stop. And those municipalities that do elections in the spring do that because they want to keep their mayor and council elections separate from the general elections. That's not to say that they don't have those other issues to address, but that's just a consideration. The other consideration is, is, you know, if you do set a spring election, you could end up statutorily prohibited from doing a spring election if there's a 25% difference. Because the statute says that if there, if the significant, if there's a significant decrease in voter turnout occurs between the, between that time, and they define significant decrease as 25%. The political subdivision shall hold its subsequent elections on the statewide election dates beginning three calendar years after the occurrence of the significant decrease in voter turnout. So it could occur at any time. It could happen right away. It could happen 10 years down the road, you know, depending on how things get changed with, with how elections are conducted and different things like that. So there's, statutorily, you run into that that issue where even if you do decide that you want a spring election, you could be forced to do a November election if turnout isn't there to justify it.
Are we good on that? Everybody sunny, anything? Okay, good.
I just have a question. So like, if we move to, let's say, a November election, locally, do the candidates that are running locally, are they with the printed out of the ballot and we're going to become a tertiary? Does that mean the local people are listed first, or are they listed, you know, at the end, after the judges that are getting elected? It will be like a three-page ballot, or?
That's up to the county, because the county controls and publishes the ballot and stuff. So I'm not sure how.
If we can find that out from terror, we can, next time we have.
Sometimes they'll put the local people first before the national, for the national candidates.
So again, I'm not sure how the county does that with their ballots, because they handle that for all the municipalities in the valley, you know, Maricopa County. And if you do choose a fall election, you're not unique. You know, there's only
Right.
one or two municipalities in the valley that do spring elections. The vast majority of municipalities do fall elections.
Am I wrong in thinking, if we go with spring in our charter, and the state comes back to us because we don't have this 25%, then they're going to force us to go back to what has always been, correct?
Correct.
So what is there to lose by leaving it as spring?
I think, aren't we assuming that that statute will also be challenged?
Well, we still have the problem with the budget issue and bringing people in.
That could be challenged and lose as well.
Yeah, I mean, the 25%, the revision after the Tucson case hasn't been challenged in the court. Just because there hasn't been an instance where, there's only 19 charter cities. And of those 19 charter cities, I didn't do a calculation to see how many do spring elections, but it's a very small number that do spring elections. And there hasn't been a challenge or a determination that the spring election cycle has fallen less than 25%.
There's some reason you'd like to maintain spring?
No, I just looking at.
We kind of have to make a decision because of the conflict and with the council, so.
So we never proposed spring elections, we just wanted to put the council, the ability to.
Correct.
Right, I think you guys just left it.
They had the ability to choose which one they want, but then like.
Litchfield Park, I think, may have, used to be spring, but when this law changed back in 2014, since 2014, Litchfield Park has been fall elections. So you wouldn't, keeping it as fall, you wouldn't be changing anything. Going to spring, you would change the cycle. The other thing that, in addition to the concern or the conflict with the budget time period, is then you're also incurring additional cost through the county for running that election in the spring. Whereas opposed, it saves money to do it in the consolidated ballot. It costs more. So those are just the pros and cons, and again, it's up to the board to decide how to move forward.
How do you think the city would like it? I don't know. Can you answer that, Sonny?
The very good point was made about the budget. City councils do not like to pass a budget that hinders a future council, so they're not going to be looking at passing, wanting to pass a budget that either they didn't set up or a budget that they aren't going to have the oversight of. So the point about the budget and a fall election makes a lot more sense.
Okay, thank you, Sonny.
I think from the city's perspective, the city's been doing fall elections for the last, you know, almost 10 years, so it really wouldn't.
So as a group, then we're pretty, ever we're good with that? Are you good with that? Okay, perfect. What was the second issue then? Joe?
So with that, then we can keep the language in the induction of mayor and council as it is with taking office on or after January first. Because we will change the language in Article Six, or Article Eleven, Section Six, to fall elections.
Great. What was the second? There was another concern that you had?
So that was with, that was the first concern with the conflict between the election cycles. The second issue that came up was with regard to Article Seven, Section Three, on the spending limitation. That is on page twelve. Debt limitation, Section Three. It just depends on if you've got the clean or the red line.
Yep.
So it's Section Three debt limitations.
So page fourteen on the red line and then?
Page twelve on the clean version.
And so this, some of this has to do, when we got into a discussion last time, and Paige had presented some stuff, and we came up with a number. We talked about the 15%. That's kind of where this has gone.
So the issues and concerns there is, one, Paige likes to spend money. She doesn't want restrictions. I sat far enough away so she couldn't hit me. So there, one issue and question came up because it talks about annual operating revenues and the need to define that, because currently, the city operates under a policy that the city doesn't include one-time revenues in its defined operating revenues. So there was that, that was the first issue. Then the second issue was a clarification as to debt service definition. What does, what does debt service entail? What does it encompass? Does that, is it just interest and amortization? Does it include bond costs and fees? And then the question was, is what happens if the debt percentage goes over 15% after the debt's already incurred? Whether that's because the annual operating revenues have decreased? For example, if the state is looking at getting rid of the food tax, that is part of the annual operating revenue. So that drops down the annual operating revenue, and now all of a sudden, you're over 15%. Or if the debt service amounts increase because you could either have some that have adjustable rates, or adjust because of certain circumstances, or what have you. So the thought there was to try to clarify those issues and discuss this with Suzanne. She doesn't like to be called Vice Chair.
We called and said, hello, Vice Chair Allen, and I said, who are you calling for?
She was looking behind her for her mom. So the suggestion there is, is in the second sentence, where it starts off to control fixed costs and to ensure the city has the ability to meet debt and all other operating costs, comma, at the time of issuance or incurring debt, the city's debt service costs shall not exceed 15% of the city's annual operating revenues as defined in city policy. Period. And then the next sentence would start off, future debt service costs in excess of 15, of the 15% limitation shall require voter approval. And I think that would just clarify those issues and concerns as that 15% is applied at the time the debt is incurred or issued. As opposed to something that happens down the road after the debt's already been issued or incurred, and all of a sudden, you go up over that 15%, maybe hit 18% or 20%.
Actually, I would like.
Go ahead, Kenny. Suzanne, let Suzanne, oh, sorry. Suzanne?
I did not raise my hand appropriately. The one thing that I would say is, I agree with all of that, because I think it's good to account for the fact that something might go awry, but I would say, future debt service costs that could cause the 15%, like, that could cause an excess of the 15% shall require voter approval. I don't think I said that very clearly, but that's what I'm trying to get to, because I don't just want it to seem like we've got 15% and that our future debt is going to exceed 15%. So I think we're trying to adjust for two different things. We're trying to adjust for if the operating revenues somehow decline and passively, our debt exceeds the 15%. And then if we were to issue debt on top of that, we would have to make sure that there's voter approval. So I think there's almost two different issues that I'm thinking of trying to address here. Does that make sense, Paige? Okay.
Kenny?
I had the same confusion. So you're proposing to say that no new debt shall be issued, that shall increase the debt service cost above 15% of revenues at the time. That's what you're saying. So no new debt shall be issued. But it doesn't say that outstanding debt can't exceed 15%. It's just you shall not issue new debt that causes debt service costs to exceed 15% of revenues. That's what we're saying?
That, yeah, that's the intent, because there's nothing in the paragraph that talks about new debt.
I asked the question last time, so I'll just say again. We can't foresee in the future how the city might finance things. And if the city institutes a property tax in the future, which means we're collecting property tax to pay for debt. I mean, all of this could change. If you're comfortable with 15%, I'm comfortable with it in there. It seems restrictive to me in that we don't know what future councils might want to do. I would be just as comfortable saying the city council's power will then shall pass a debt load. Something like that, so that they have control of that. I don't know that I, sitting here today, want to say what the council should do 20 years from now in terms of debt percentage to revenue. It seems overly restrictive to me. But if we're going to do it, and I agree with you that if you want to say, no new debt shall be issued, see 15% of current revenues at the time. If that's what you want to do, I think that's.
Do we know if there's a standard with some of the other charters of what they're?
Didn't see, most cities have a debt policy that the council adopts, but I didn't see any debt, specific debt policies in charters, other than some do list an amount. I think some say $500,000. Anything over that has to go to the voters, or anything that's like a sports facility must be approved by the voters. This is more in line with a lot of cities' debt policies.
Debt policies not in the charter.
Correct.
See, that's what I'm saying, is this is unusual to state in the charter. And Litchfield Park is unusual. Litchfield Park has always said, we don't want a property tax, and we don't want to incur debt. And it's old-fashioned way of thinking, and it may always be that way, but it may not. And I'll tell you the argument, I'm just going to say for a minute.
And I'll tell you the argument, I'm just going to say for a minute, this is why people have bonds and debt. Because if you don't, then what you're saying is we're going to tax the heck out of you for the next thirty years so that we can build a wall around our city. And then when we build it, you won't be here to enjoy it, but thank you for the money. The reason cities are allowed to issue tax-exempt debt bonds, you know, debt, and collect the property tax at a very low interest rate to pay for it is so that you enjoy the benefits of those assets that are built with the money. So we want to build a big new park, we issue bonds, we build a park, you're enjoying the park, but you're paying property tax to pay for it. That's the reason behind tax-exempt bonds and all of that. The city of Litchfield Park, people treat debt like credit cards, can't have any credit card debt. It's, so I understand why we do this. They may change their mind in the future. There's a really good reasonable reason why you have debt. Anyway, so I would almost be willing to just change this whole section and say the city council by ordinance shall pass a debt policy and approve it annually. But, and, and take away this fifteen percent. But Paige, I'm depending on you. If, if you think fifteen percent is a good one to put in the charter, not in a policy, but in the charter, I'm okay with it.
I, I think it depends how restrictive you all would like it to be.
We don't, I don't, we don't necessarily want to be restrictive. We don't want to be that, that restrictive.
I think fifteen percent, as of today, of course, our revenues could change, still gives some flexibility. But yes, it is restricted. We would be the only city to have something like this in a charter.
Yeah, Sonny?
I like Kenny's idea if Paige is comfortable that leave that up to the council as they move along and, and understand where we're going financially rather than us putting it in a charter that makes it where if it's going to change, we got to go back to the voters to, to change it.
And there's still such, sorry, Sonny.
Go ahead.
There's still such a huge process that the city has to go through. You know, it's not like they can just overnight, you know, there's, there's notices, we have to go through a, a bond rating, public meetings. So there, it is a very thoughtful process that goes into beforehand.
So Joe, how, could this be changed as, similar to what Kenny was talking about and then not even have the fifteen percent?
You can do whatever you guys want to, or you can, if, if you don't want to get rid of that whole philosophy or section, you could change it to make it more liberal, say, instead of shall not exceed fifteen percent, shall not exceed twenty-five or thirty percent. You give, you give a lot more flexibility and you still have that, that financial control in the charter. But you still have that flexibility where if, if something does change, I think you're going to find that the, the current council is still going to have a, a, a policy of fifteen percent. Even if the charter says thirty percent, they're not going to go out and incur debt up to thirty percent. But if you change that, that amount, that percentage, that gives the, the flexibility that's desired without getting rid of the section, but still having that financial control in the charter. Or you can do with what other charter cities do and just identify that the, the mayor and council shall establish a, a debt limitation policy.
I think I like that. I think if we start raising numbers, twenty-five, thirty, that you're going to start turning.
The reason I haven't been comfortable with this, Paige, you touched on it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about it just a minute. The state statute is very complicated when it comes to how much cities can spend. You have a permanent base, it gets adjusted each year and you have an expenditure limitation and you can't spend over that. Guess what's exempt from that? Debt. Voter-approved debt doesn't count against your expenditure limitation. There's a reason for all that. It's because the state is pushing cities. Go make sure that people enjoy the assets that they're paying for. Don't have them save for thirty years to buy a new park and then not get to enjoy that park. They want you to exclude debt from your expenditure limitation. They want you to issue bonds that are tax exempt. They want you to do all those things because it makes sense for the voters. If this is just a very simple solution to a very complicated problem, and I would, I would just as soon go with the very vague, let them approve a debt policy by ordinance. Well, I think they should have a debt policy.
Want to just take out the section six altogether?
Take it out altogether and they probably.
Or do you just want to put something like, are you suggesting the council may incur debt? And then they'll have a, they also will set a debt policy? Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
I'm saying you, you could put in here that they have to have a debt policy, or you could just leave it.
I think we need to put something in about debt. We've got stuff in there about revenues. We got to cover the other side of it.
I think it's a good idea to have them explore the issue of debt and sit down together and have an ordinance that says you shall not exceed this percentage of debt. But I like the idea of just putting that in there.
And in, in section, taking out, completely taking out section three and then putting in that verbiage that you were talking about?
Council by ordinance.
By ordinance, yeah. What do you think about that?
Joe or Paige?
I think it's very wise and fiscally responsible that all cities have a debt policy. So yeah, if you put it in the charter that they're required to, I think that's, makes sense.
Okay.
Joe? I like that.
Yeah.
Sonny? Chuck?
Yeah, I agree. I think that gives flexibility because I, the people that I talk to were concerned about losing that grocery tax money. I don't want to be limited if that happens to us with that we can't react quickly.
Okay. Bobby? Anne, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mike, anything?
Most flexibility we can have, I think, better.
Okay. Um, Frazer, Andrew, anything?
No, it sounds good to me.
Okay, Gay?
I, I couldn't hear what was said. It, it broke up too much. But if everybody else is in favor, I'm in favor of having it be flexible.
Wish that, turn the green light on there, yep.
It looked green to me. I'm colorblind. I'll just read that second sentence one more time.
Yeah, okay.
It would read, to control fixed costs and ensure the city has the ability to meet debt and all other operating costs, the council by way of ordinance shall adopt a debt limitation policy.
Yes, agree.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are the, that was the second of the two items that we were concerned about, or there was some concern about. And then the third one had to do in the ethics. Joe, is that right?
Yes.
Suzanne, did you have a?
To Article ten, section three, personal interests. And that is on page eighteen of the clean version and probably twenty or twenty-one on the red one. Say Article two, section three. Article ten, section three, under personal interest. So here the concern is, is the definition of substantial interest in section, subsection D, where it defines substantial interest as the ownership of three or more percent of shares of corporation or or profit and talks about dividends. What this doesn't do and, and what it wouldn't cover would be other business structures and organizations like LLCs, limited partnerships, joint ventures. This really has a very narrow definition as to what substantial interest is. And the state statute defines substantial interest already. Where under state statute, substantial interest is defined as any non-speculative pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest. So the suggestion here is either just incorporate states with the language from state statute, say substantial interest means or just reference substantial interest means, substantial interest is as defined in state statute. And that keeps it a little cleaner, a little easier, and you get rid of almost a paragraph of, of language.
Suzanne, you had a chance to go over that before. What do you think?
I think it's fine. I am so glad that Joe saw that and recognized it because I think we want to close any loopholes that may exist, and I think this is a loophole.
Great. Are we all in an agreement on that change?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Andrew?
Yes.
Those were the, the three main areas that we caught as we were going through this is that we wanted to address with, with the board. And so I think then, as was suggested, we go back and just go through page by page if you want to, or if somebody has questions, suggestions.
I have a question. Where do we, where did we put the section in there on the Hilltop property? Or is that? Did that not come in online? As far as what, the La Loma property? Is that built in?
It was, here it is on section four, Article nine, section four.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and it states, the city shall maintain ownership of the La Loma Homestead property and preserve it as a social, cultural and historical amenity, which is the language of the current restriction.
So do you guys want to go through it page by page here, just one last time? Yes, okay, here we go, starting on Susan Fix.
I was just going to ask for sake of ease, since the monitor's not working, is it better to use the red line version or the clean version?
As long as we're referencing articles and sections, I don't think it matters. Just don't reference page numbers because we all have different.
Yeah, just reference the section. I'm going off the clean version so I can have a, a red line of the clean version so that it's just easier to track. I think we, we provide the red line version just so you can see what, what changes that were made. There was a, a number of changes that were made for word consistency and stuff. For example, there was a lot of reference to state law or state statute that was amended to provide for state law in certain circumstances because state law would include statutes, constitution, case law kind of thing, as opposed to just limiting it to state statute. So there was those types of amendments and things. So that was the reason for giving you both the, the clean and the red line is so that you could see all of the changes that were, were made. And if you had any issues with, with those, I believe member Jones already pointed out to me when, one of those changes that, that he saw that we're going to, to change back to the language it was. So I think it would be, for me, I'm going to go through and I've got the, the clean version so I can put in any changes that we're making tonight.
Good. All right, so Article one, section one, two, A, B, and C. I don't think there were any changes on that. Anybody have any questions? Article one. Moving into Article two. I just see on that mine, on the red line, there was just a lot of verbiage that was taken out. Is that just, was able, you were able to clean that up is all?
Yeah, and that was cleanups. I think that, that's overall cleanups from the initial version and everything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Sonny?
I think I'm still in Article two, section five, terms of council members.
Article two, section five. Yeah, we're just moving through that. Is that where you're at?
Yeah, I'm still in Article two. Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure we covered this, but I'm just.
Wait, wait, wait. That's Article three.
Article three.
Article three. So let me, let me keep going here then. So Article one, we're done with that. Article two, incorporation, form of government, powers and boundaries. We'd had changed somewhere in terms of levy as opposed to may levy. All right, anything on Article two? So Article three, the council. Sonny, what was your concern on that one?
I don't have a concern. I'm just confirming in my own mind. I think we discussed it and I'm pretty sure I understand it. What we're saying in section five, that with the term limitations, the council member can run and, and have four, four-year term. And then at the end of that, he could run for mayor. She, he or she could run for mayor and have another sixteen years.
Four, four-year term.
In other words, that's what we're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Because the, now that was one of the questions is if, if, if we should put in clarification language that a, a limitation on council doesn't apply to limitation on mayor. But legally, that's implied because they are separate positions, separate elected positions. So the limitation on the mayor's position doesn't carry over to the council and vice versa. And the way we have it written is that no person may be elected for more than four such terms, whether served consecutively, non-consecutively, impartial or in full, and this limitation shall apply to all individuals that held the office of mayor or council member prior to the effective date of this charter, except as provided in section B. And then section B is where it provides for either the mayor or current serving council member as of the effective day may continue to, in office until the end of the term. And if that individual has already served four or more terms or is currently in their fourth term, they may seek one additional term.
Kenny, is that, do you like that, Sonny?
I just want to make sure I.
Yeah, yeah, I like the way that, that you clarified, clarified that. Good.
That's all.
Perfect.
In section six, I have
Kenny?
Something here. So in section six, talking about the duties of the mayor, the second sentence says, the mayor may make or second motions and must have a voice and vote in all council proceedings. That's completely incorrect. They, that, that implies that if the mayor is absent from a meeting, the, no action can be taken. If they must have a vote and must have a vote, that's just, and I, I think what it should say is, and whether it says shall or must doesn't matter to me, but it should say have a voice and the ability to vote in all council proceedings. So I, I've changed it back from must to shall, so it would read, the mayor may make or second motions and shall have a voice and vote in all council proceedings. My understanding of the legal jargon is shall means must. Shall is, it isn't can, it is that, that will happen. And you can't say he shall have a vote on every council proceeding. He might be absent, he or she. So I think it's better to, however you want to word it, to say the ability to vote. I don't think you can say must vote on all proceedings.
All right, Sonny, did you have a?
What if we kept it at may, may?
Well, I don't know. What, what we're trying to say here, I think, is the mayor has the same vote as all the other council members. This says the mayor must vote on all proceedings.
Well, however you want to. Changing it back to shall have a vote in all council proceedings has a different connotation.
So if you say shall have a vote, that means he shall have the ability to vote. If that's what you think, that's fine with me. Okay.
And I think legally, clearly, the mayor would not be required or forced to have a vote if he wasn't present at a meeting.
When you put must and all together, it just makes a whole different meaning.
Are we good on that now?
Are, are we just going?
Just taking it page, we're, we're still in Article three.
Okay.
Taking it sort of moving through it. So that section you went through, it had to do with of this mayor, section six, so looking at section seven, eight, A, B, and C, section nine, ten, and eleven.
I, I, I just have one word, I think, in section eleven, paragraph D. It says convicted of violating a felony. I don't know, I, I think it's committing a felony, isn't it? Violating a felony?
Convicted of violating a felony.
Committing a felony?
Okay, so there, is that proven innocent until proven guilty or?
Can you, can you violate a felony?
We can just say is convicted of a felony.
What, how do I say it? Violating a felony sounded funny to me.
I thought the same thing.
Mr. Faith, do you have any comments on that?
I agree with Kenny.
All right, he agrees with Kenny. You've got that one, Joe?
Yep, we'll just say is convicted of a felony.
Better not be.
Something thirteen.
Sonny, something on thirteen?
Special meetings, just seems like a word just slipped out to me. The mayor, our acting mayor, at the request of three council members by giving notice thereof to all council members, may call a special meeting of the council. Instead of saying all members call a special meeting, it just seems weird. Just add the word may.
Yes.
Got that, Joe?
I have something sixteen if we don't for that part. Okay. This petition confused me a little bit. It says any person may appear before the council in any regular meeting, present a written petition, and such petitions shall be basically heard by the council or considered by the council within sixty days. Is, is this what we do now? I've never heard of this. So let me just pose something here. One husband and wife create a petition. They get to go to the council and it will appear on agenda and they will consider it within sixty days. That sounds like residents have the power to put something on the agenda and they will consider it and more power than any, I don't know what a definition of a petition is, but this sounds funny to me. I've never seen this kind of language.
Other municipalities have that language. We could have more restrictive requirements there, say petitions with over a hundred signatures or over fifty signatures or, or have some type of.
So if we did, if we did nothing and citizens had an issue and they gathered a hundred petitions, which happens in cities all over the state, and they bring it to a council member and say, we want this issue discussed, then the council decides, hey, a hundred people said they want to discuss this. I, as a council member, and I'm going to propose this go on a meeting agenda. But to think that any one or two people, consisting of two people, could create a petition that requires consideration by council seems odd. I would just as soon leave it out because it happens by itself. It happens, people create petitions on their own. They don't check with the charter to see if they can create a petition. They just petition council members on issues. What do you guys think? I don't, I don't know.
Do this, this got added in from the original? What, I don't.
I don't know. This is the first time, this is the first time I looked at it and realized that anybody who presents something to a council member and calls it a petition, they have to consider it within sixty days. I, I've never, I guess I missed it a few times.
We can remove that entire Section Sixteen if you'd like. I, I don't.
Yes, that's what I'd prefer.
I was just gonna say, this doesn't, it's, it's clear that any individual can attend.
Chuck, can you, Chuck, can you use the mic?
It's clear that any individual can attend a council meeting and in the public comment portion of the meeting raise whatever issue they want and then council takes it under advisement. That's, I think what that's trying to say, but I agree that it shouldn't be that they had to take action and, and be able to
Suzanne.
Act that way.
Do we have any guidelines on petitions are done? Like, what is the definition of a petition? This husband and wife would have to meet in order to present it before the council? Like, when I think of a petition, I think, okay, they want to do a petition to something, do something, and they, you know, have to collect signatures, similar to how we, you know, this office. So is that kind of what the petition process is like?
That's the, the intent. I can tell you, we, we have this process in the city of Bisbee. And there's a petition form that the city has that the, the individuals could write on that and say, you know, we'd like to petition the council to consider this issue and then go and get signatures. But there's also a requirement for X number of signatures before the council's required to consider it. I think one of the reasons for some municipalities having that is, you know, they, they may have had issues in the past where the council just weren't considering issues that the, the general residencies were, were trying to address. So that, that's a way of making the council consider something. But again, whether it's in the charter or not, as was said, typically, the typical process is if an issue is of, of such a substantial concern that somebody's out gathering signatures and, and putting it on a petition, that it's going to be addressed to the, at, at least a council member or somebody who's going to then try to address it to the, to the body and as a whole.
Because what I would hate is for somebody to feel like they didn't have a voice because.
Well, doesn't it say this line, and referral to the city manager for staff consideration shall also constitute council consideration? So if they take it, look at it, and feel that it's not necessary, then they've dealt with it there. They don't necessarily have to act upon it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
That actually happens frequently where someone will come to a council meeting, they propose something, and then there, they'll have an answer at the next meeting and they'll say, we referred this to the city manager and we get in touch with you. And so they've, they've considered it now. You could, it actually happened when I've been on, working for the city. There was a huge petition about the lake years and years ago, before we had an ordinance about fishing or anything. People were fishing at the lake. The people around the lake were very upset about it because they were leaving stuff everywhere. So it basically was referred to me as the community and recreation service director at the time to meet with that group. And we came up with some ideas and we eventually had an ordinance about how the lakes would be conducted, but that's how it was handled. So that, that would solve it, that last line.
So, yeah, I, Suzanne brought up the exact issue that I saw when I read this, which is if you're going to put this in here, you need to define petition and how many signatures they must gather before it qualifies as a petition to be heard by the city council. And I just thought rather than do that, but if you want to leave it as it is with the understanding that the city council has to put it on agenda within sixty days because it's, yeah, they have to go on agenda to consider it. And then during that meeting, they can say, we refer this issue. They can't do anything without agendizing. So they would have to put it on an agenda and within sixty days, and then they could refer it to a staff.
Yeah, that's what that looks like that is.
Okay. But wait, I'm, I'm not saying that they have to put it on agenda. I'm saying they could just refer it.
That's what it says here. So if they refer.
Saying that it has to go on agenda.
They can refer it if it comes.
No, it says referral to city man would consideration shall also constitute city council consideration here under. So if it's been referred over, then that's considered, they've.
Okay.
Is that right, Joe, on that?
So my question is why the sixty days? Is that necessary? Can we just take that whole sentence out? Such petitions shall be considered?
Yeah, I like that. Just in the regular course of business, it will be considered. Not within sixty days.
Can that be done?
The reason the sixty days is in there is it, it provides those individuals who are submitting the petition with, with a knowledge that, okay, this is going to be on a council meeting within this period of time and not just be, you know, ignored or postponed or something like that.
Some remedy.
Yeah, I, I don't really, really think there's a problem with that whole
Okay.
paragraph, and it does have an out for the city.
Yeah, that's good. I'm, I'm fine with that. Let's not, I'm not gonna.
Are we good on that?
Not gonna.
Alright, so we'll move through sixteen, seventeen, and on into Article Four, unless there's some other concern on Article Three.
So just so we're clear, we're not going to make any changes to the consideration of petition section.
Correct. Suzanne?
I'm sorry, I'm kind of conflicted on this petition because I don't think I fully understand the process. And so I feel like I can't make a decision one way or the other. I know people are probably getting frustrated with me for perseverating on this. But, like, I would hate for somebody to feel shut down, like they couldn't come to the city council and say, hey, this is really important to me. I got signatures for this and I really want you to consider it. So maybe it's something that we address it here, like they can appear before the council, like, is there an ordinance that can be done, like? But I also understand Ken's point, like, he doesn't want the council taking up their time with all these, like, if it's a frivolous petition, like, and then it's on the agenda. So I see both sides to it.
Yeah, but I mean, real, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. On both sentences, allow that. It gives them the opportunity to come in. And then the city says, well, wait a minute, we're going to refer this to our city manager. And then it's dealt with. It's considered being dealt with.
Okay.
And realistically, you're not expending a ton of
Okay.
council time on, on those issues, but you are showing the, the, the residents, the, the citizenry that you are open to hearing concerns and addressing those concerns.
Okay. Ken, are you?
I'm fine. Yeah.
Good.
Like, let's just.
Alright, so Article, Article Four, City Manager. One, two, three.
And now's the time to make the changes because he's in San Diego. So.
So I, remind me, I, I've only talked to one other board member, so I didn't violate any open meeting laws, but somebody else remind me. We get down to Section Six, and we've been consistent throughout this process of saying, let's give the city council the ability to act. Let's not tie their hands in the charter. Let's not do that. And then we get to Section Six and say, you can't fire the city manager. Okay, they're, they're hiring the city manager, they're firing the city manager, they, they create a contract with the city manager. I don't know why we would say you cannot fire the city manager on these given days. I don't know why we say that. If, if they have, and it even says, you know, if, if they violate something, they can do it, right? But I, I don't know why we say in the charter that is supposed to protect citizens' rights that the people who represent the citizens can't take action against a hired employee. What's the likelihood? And I, and I've lived through this because I remember during the recall election, the recall was all about you need to get on the city council and fire the city manager. Because here, there's big lawsuit against Cabuto and they're up in arms. But it's very unlikely that new council members come in and the first order of business is to fire the city manager. And, and if there's good reason to do it, I don't know why the charter would say you can't do it. We've been pretty consistent in giving council leeway to do their jobs. So anyway, I don't know why B and C are in there, is my point.
Typically, they're, they're in there because the, the professional city managers that you're going to want, that you want to hire are going to require those types of terms in their contract, in the contract.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Because it is such a, a very political position and is subject to the whim of the, of the elected officials. You could have a, 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 a four to three swing in any given election if you've got a, a mayor and three council members being elected. And it just provides for a, a short time period, a ninety-day time period for that, that discussion to happen. Okay.
So I think you just hit it on the point though.
I'm just saying, are you all good with this? Because like I said, consistently, we have said, let the council do their job. Don't tell them how to do their job. This, this deviates from that. If you're all okay with that, I.
Miss, thank you. I think that Joe hit it on the head with that's typical language that's included in the contract. And anything that had to do with the city manager, I think there was another section that I asked about, and that was addressed in the contract. So we just took it out. As long as that's something that's typically negotiated in the contract, I'm fine taking it out of the charter.
That was contract indefinite period. We took that out. The city manager said my contract is for an indefinite period, but we didn't want to put that in the charter.
We took out the resignation piece. The part where it said the manager shall provide the council with a minimum of sixty days written notice. We took that out because that's something that he handles in the contract.
The, the other thing you have to remember is that this position is not governed under the, the standard protections that the other employees have with regard to hearings and things like that. This provides that protection in the charter so that it's incorporated into the contract. I can tell you that in my experience in, in being in municipalities that have had, had changeover between managers and such, that the managers do look at what the provisions of the charter provide in, in those protections because you could end up in a situation where you've got somebody that you really want to bring in from out of state. And they want to make sure that, you know, they're going to uproot their, their families, their lives move somewhere completely different. They're going to have some minimal protections and you're talking ninety days and an opportunity for a public hearing prior to removal, which is substantially less than what the, the other employees of the city have. The other employees have much more protection when it comes to their positions and what's required for progressive discipline. There, there's much more protection. Here, it's just, you're, you're saying ninety days after an election period, so you don't have that issue where you have somebody who is, is running on, I'm gonna, I want to get elected because I want to fire the manager. And even if, if that is the case, and, and that's what the, the residencies want, typically what happens as soon as that individual is, is elected or individuals are elected, there is a discussion that happens for a, a more seamless transition as opposed to just jumping into a termination. Because that's one thing that other, that individuals who are looking to fill a vacancy, they're looking, well, why, why did that city manager leave? Did they leave for another job or were they fired? And were they fired? How many other city managers were fired in that, in that city? And they look at that, that history. And that does raise substantial concerns. I can tell you, I've, I've got a municipality that went out for procurement for a new city manager. They did not get the applications that they wanted because they had a, a, a history of having substantial turnover in that position. So people look at it and like, I'm not even going to bother with that municipality because they go through city managers like changing water, water filters.
Thank, thank you. That's really good reasoning for why we have this in there. So if you want to keep it in, keep it in. I'm just saying it's a little inconsistent.
Are we good to? I mean, if we, if we said we don't want that in there and we send it back to you, is it going to come back saying it has to be in there?
No. No, I'm just giving you explanations. Whatever the board decides is, is what goes into the document. I'm just explaining, and there are, the vast majority of charters do provide for those, these minor issues just because of the fact that the, the manager is exempt from the other progressive disciplinary policies of the city. So.
And that's why it's different, a little bit different than what we've been doing with the city council, having the control. No, yeah, that's fine. If, if, as long as understanding this is, and, and, and I know this came up last time, we really want somebody who's been notified that they're being terminated to get the right to go before the public and tell everybody how bad the council members are, right? Because this guarantees them the right for a public hearing after they've been given their notice of termination, right?
Right.
Okay. Sounds odd to me, but that's what you, if that's normal, that's normal.
Is anybody else?
Yeah, it's great protection for the city manager. I understand.
Well, yeah, it's not that he would necessarily go and say how bad the council is. He'd go and say, I'm being removed unjustly and give his reasons.
Right, but he's already.
A reasonable thing.
Okay, okay. Alright, nevermind.
No, any, any other discussion on that? Mike, any concerns?
I seem to be the one that keeps saying, let's just take out everything.
But I, I agree with you partially because the more restrictions we put in here, the harder it is for things to flow, to work, function.
How would you think we handle that, Kenny? Would you just remove that section?
I'd say that's a big restriction.
Well, I, I, I understand everything you said. There's a lot of validity to it. We want to hire good city managers. If you think it precludes us from getting good city managers in here, that's a good reason to have it be different than everything else we do in here, but it is different. And all the other things we say, the council will use good common sense. If they want to be able to hire a new city manager, they're not going to come in and fire this guy on day one. We're going to give them the ability to do it, understanding that they're smart enough to not do, okay? That's how we've treated most things in here. But if in this case, you think that we need to put this in here in the charter so that council members don't do something stupid in the future, then we leave it in here.
Well, it's not necessarily the councils don't do something stupid. Then the, there, there may be justification for the termination and removal of, of the city manager. What this does is it provides some minimal protections for that individual who's not covered under the city's disciplinary policies. Whereas every other employee except for the, the manager, the attorney, and the magistrate judge are covered under the progressive disciplinary policies where you have to give them notice and you have to provide progressive discipline before you can ultimately end up in a termination, which still end up, has the, the right to a, to a hearing. This just says you're, you're going to limit that time period to, to ninety days. And you're, you're going to have the right to a, a public hearing to.
I heard what you said because you've said it a couple of times and I disagree. This is the only employee that gets to negotiate a contract with the city council. The other employees don't get to do that. And if in those negotiations, they say, I shall not be terminated within ninety days of an election so that I have. And if in those negotiations, they say, I shall not be terminated within ninety days of an election so that I have effect, then they can put that in the contract. So, so there's difference. I, I wouldn't say one is better than the other, but there's different protections for different people. And so that's why I said, and, and what you just said, if the person isn't performing well, just sorry, you're going to watch them poorly perform for ninety days before you get to do anything about it, right? Because that's the rule. That doesn't seem reasonable to me. But, you know. We've, we've.
Suzanne.
Sorry, Ken, I just want to tell you one more time that I think if it's something that can be addressed in the contract, we should do it and not in the charter. So I think I'm in.
Should we do a, of, of show of hands as to how many would like to see B and C removed?
I have one more comment on it.
Go ahead, Son.
I don't know everything that's been in all the other city councils, uh, city managers' contracts necessarily. But the ones that I'm aware of all said that they could not be removed with a simple majority. It had to be a super majority to remove them. And that was pretty much the comfort that they had. In other words, not just a couple of people could be upset with them and, and have them removed.
Well, state statute provides for four. This charter provides for five.
Yeah, that's, that's what the city managers that I've been aware of, the contracts.
Well, that, we, that puts it in there. So we, you're right, we can leave Section Six, leave Section A, but then remove Section B and Section C. And that would give us enough.
Right. And as was said, th- those issues can be negotiated as contractual terms.
That's what I thought was consistent with everything else we've done.
Mike, you said you liked less? Okay. Anne, do you have any issues on that?
Well, if it's in the contract, I, I, I think we can remove it.
Okay. Kenny or Bobby?
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we, we've had this discussion earlier.
Okay.
With the manager here, so.
All right. Good. Martin, everybody?
I agree.
Hold on one second. Martin.
What you're saying, I also heard a lot right here. And he spoke a long time about what, why. And so I think he's our city attorney. I don't think it's, I think it's a good idea to try to listen. And so I kind of changed my mind on that. I, I think we should leave it in. But I'm okay if we take it out, just because we always talk about the future. We don't know what's coming. We don't know who's going to look at what. We may not have a city manager. We may get a really bad city manager because they don't see this. I don't think it hurts us to have this in here. Uh, I don't see the detriment to it. It should be in their contract. I agree with you. It should be. By the same token, just listening, it wasn't like a two-word answer we got from our attorney. It was rather elaborate and well said. So I thought of it from a different point of view. So I have no problem with leaving it in here. Even though it may not be consistent with everything else that we have in our, but there's a lot of things that aren't quite consistent, so.
But remember, I get paid by the word, so.
Yeah, good one.
So just because I, I go on in my explanation, that, that, don't, don't read into that, but.
What do you think about, Kenny, what do you think about Marty?
I, I understand too, that, that there are protections for the city manager in here. And if it, you know, keeps us from getting a good city manager, I understand that. But, uh, city managers typically negotiate pretty good contracts, so I, I think the easiest thing is to leave it. If everybody wants to leave it, I'm okay with that, understanding that it's a little bit different than everything else.
Chuck.
Uh, I think I, uh, like having it in there if it gives us a better pool of candidates for a future city manager. Even though a contract is going to be negotiated with this type of language, someone looking for the position sees this in a charter and then has uh, a tendency to, to want to, want to work here, want to be here.
Andrew, do you have any thoughts?
I'm in favor of leaving it in.
Okay. Game?
Yeah, I'm, I'm too. Leave it in.
Okay, I'm fine with leaving it in too, since I brought it up.
Twos and fix?
I'm fine with it staying in.
All right, we'll keep it in. But if you guys, let's take a five-minute break before we move into Article Five. Okay. Um, I think we're ready. We can go ahead and get started. On Article Five, Section One, City Clerk, Section Two, City Finance Director, and Section Three, the City Attorney. And we've spent quite a bit of time on those in the past. I don't see there's a whole lot of additions on anything. Or, I mean. On you, Sonny, you have something? Well, I'm on page eleven, so you must have the edited version.
No, I don't have the.
Okay. What article, what article are you concerned about? Article Five, Administrative Departments, Offices, Employees. So Article Five is to do with City Clerk, City Finance Director, City Attorney.
Okay, let's.
All right, when we. Then we're going to go through five and then we'll get to six.
Yeah.
Suzanne, anything on Section, on Article Six?
Negotiated in your contract, all right?
Yeah, you probably want that be paid too. So we'll move on into Article Six, Appointed Boards and Commissions. Okay, go ahead, Sonny, vacancies? Uh, can you get the mic, um, Sonny too? And then, yeah, the green, sorry.
Run Article Six, Section One?
Yep. He's concerned, he has something on Section D. Section, Paragraph D, Section One.
I might have, I might. It talks about that they can, maybe I'm in the wrong place, but that they can, um, appoint people to, uh, a commission. And it says commissions are served for three years, but then there's no terms. In other words, are they done after three years or can they continue for six years or whatever?
For example, there's no term that's on boards and commissions that can be established for parent council. But they can be reappointed. They can be reappointed.
Do we need to say something?
Look at F, F handles it.
Is your mic on?
Do we need to say something like that? I mean, about, because it just says, if you're on a commission, you're appointed for three, three years.
Suzanne.
In Paragraph F, it says, a member's term shall extend until his successor has been appointed. So to me, unless somebody is appointed to fill that position, you can continue to have it indefinitely. That's my interpretation. Joe, do you agree?
I mean, you're probably right. I just didn't see it.
It, so you mentioned Paragraph D. I'm looking at Paragraph F, so.
Joe, does that cover that?
Correct. And then also in E, it says, a, a member of a board of commissioners shall serve a term of three years with the terms of the members being staggered because there is no limitation. There's nothing that would prohibit a reappointment. And so you, you don't need to state that there can be a reappointment. You would only want to put a limitation there if you wanted to limit the number of terms.
No, that's how we do it now. I just wanted to make sure.
It's cleared, cleared.
Yeah, you got it, thank you.
All right, so we'll move on into Article Seven, Finance Taxation. We did spend a little bit of time on Section Three.
Cameron, I have a question on, on Section Four that was taken out. Did we, can't remember, remind me, did we agree to not mention property tax anywhere in the document? Is that what we said? Because what we have here is taxing powers. And it says the council can, uh, levy taxes, they can collect taxes. It has all these things that they have for taxing powers. And I thought we balanced that by leaving Section Four in there that says the cities can only implement a property tax with voter approval. So that people who have the question about property taxes won't just see all the taxing powers of the council, but will also see something that says, but a property tax must be voted on. Did we agree to take that out?
I think because statutorily, you have to vote on a property.
I thought that was already in.
But we, we said that. We said if you, if you're silent on it, they have to anyway. But my question is, the people who are going to read this and vote on it are going to see all of these sections and all of these references to all of the taxing powers of the cities with no mention of property tax. I, I would prefer to leave the property tax Section Four in there. I thought we already said that, but I, I may be mistaken.
Marty, do you remember on that one?
I put that in there too, and I think we should put it in there because people are going to flip to that. And they're going to look for that because that seems to be one of our hot button issues. So I have no problem with putting that in there, even though it is covered in other areas because they're going to look for that specifically.
This is different, Joe, than what I put forth to you. I think I put forth in Section Two, I had Paragraph A, one, two, the initiation of a property tax shall require an election of the voters to approve such property tax. And then I had Section Three as debt issuance limitations. And then that, the rest of it. So this is, this is different. This red line is different.
We eliminated Section Four because we were going to include it in Section Two under the taxing powers.
So yes, that is, that is correct.
Where am I going to, where did I miss that? And so I can add it back.
You had it in Section Two. Anne, Suzanne?
Yeah, in Section Two. I don't know how to show this to you, what I was looking at for myself. But I know I sent it to you. I sent it out to all the members, I thought. So in Section One should be fiscal, and Section Two, taxing powers, Paragraph A, the council shall have the power to levy and collect value, privilege, excise, and any other tax not prohibited by the federal or state constitution for any lawful municipal purpose. Do you want me to resend this to you, Joe? I thought we did.
So then the other option would be to just put Section Four back in there and leave Section Four.
Well, I want to make sure we get the, the correct language that was. What did you just say, Suzanne? Did you say that ta- under taxing powers, it says for any lawful purpose? And we took out all of those references to one, two, and, one and two that pay the interest and all that?
I condensed it all into just three paragraphs.
Okay. That, that's what I remember too, I, I thought we said, there's no reason to say, well, they can, they can use those taxes to pay interest and pay bonds, they can use, or for any other lawful purpose, we just end the paragraph up top to say, they can collect that money and use it for any lawful purpose, instead of enumerating one and two.
Well, I had included, this is what I had proposed, and I'll read it out to you, and you can look at it in conjunction with the redline version that Joe sent out, or the city set out. Paragraph A, that I drafted, "The council shall have the power to levy and collect value, privilege, excise, and any other tax not prohibited by federal or state constitution for any lawful municipal purpose, including but not limited to general expenses incurred in the operation of city government and to pay the interest and repay the bonded indebtedness of the city." Paragraph One, "The council shall have the power to set transaction, privilege, tax, and use tax through city ordinance." Paragraph Two, "The initiation of a property tax shall require an election of the voters to approve such property tax and require voter, voter approval of the proposed property tax amount." And then it went to Section Three, Debt Limitations.
Okay, that's what I remember too, and I think, I like the idea of leaving the reference to property tax in there, which is what I thought we kinda decided. And I just found that email, and I'm.
Thanks, Joe, my feelings are only a little hurt.
Yeah, we don't need to wordsmith it, I, as long as.
No, we agree on that as a board.
There was a consensus to have that, that line in there.
Thank you, I, I feel better. Mr. Chairman, I have a question in Section Seven, if we don't have anything before that.
Before we get to that, Joe, do you have, you have a way to put that in, you've got that built back in?
Yes, I've got that, that was the one section that got.
Okay.
Missed.
And so that will be in, and then Kenny, what was your question?
I had three or four people working on going through this, because it helps with clean eyes when you have a, a number of people looking at, you know, for grammatical and stuff, but.
Okay. As long as it's in, we're good.
And I apologize to the Vice Chair, Alan.
As long as you refer to her by Vice Chair, that's okay. Page in Section Seven, where it says, "An independent audit and review shall be conducted," we, do we wanna say annually? Okay, it's not like it shall be conducted and then we're done with it.
Shall be conducted as required by state law, state law requires an annual. Correct.
Can we leave it at that, as required by state law, that, because the state law does require.
Shall be conducted, okay, so just be, okay. That's fine.
Anything else on Article Seven, Finance, Taxing? Okay, Andrew, anybody?
No, none for me.
Okay. So with the exception of the one addition, or stating on that, the property tax clarification, we'll move through that and we'll go into Article Eight.
Mr. Chairman, in Section Three of Article Eight, it says, "A majority vote of seven-member council shall be sufficient to pass motions." I don't think that's correct, I think it's a majority vote of members present. If it says majority of seven, then you have to have four votes to pass anything. I think it's a majority of present, unless it's an emergency, right? But it, it references that later.
Where are we at, Section What?
Section Three.
Article Eight, Section Three.
It's not a majority vote of seven. It's a majority vote of.
Of the.
The present during, as long as there's a quorum.
You're saying a majority vote of the.
So, the way I would.
However you wanna word it.
Just say, "A majority vote of the seven-member council present and establishing a quorum shall be sufficient to pass motions, resolutions, ordinances."
Perfect. Anything else, Kenny?
I would just. Uh, qualify that, and at the end, sufficient to pass motions, resolutions, and ordinances, unless otherwise provided for by state law, because there are certain state law requirements that require a supermajority.
Well, otherwise provided by state law or herein, because we talk about emergency measures here that require more too. Either by this charter or by state law, right?
So I have, unless otherwise provided by state law or by this charter, yes. So that way, if there's a requirement for a supermajority.
Yes.
That, that doesn't get overridden by the majority vote provision.
Okay.
And I can just take out. Seven-member, and just say, "Majority vote of the council present and establishing a quorum shall be sufficient."
Yes.
That's better.
Because we know it is a seven-member council.
That's better. Anything else on Article Eight? Good on Article Eight? We'll move in, into Article Nine. And then that's the area that where they talk about the La Loma Project in Section Four, that we, we had added. Everybody's happy with that?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate, I think that wording, that the, the solution of taking the exact language right out of whatever the deed said was good, and, and I'm just gonna say this, and if it's a yes, it's a yes, if no is a no. I would add to that, and preserving the legacy of Paul, of Paul W. Litchfield. I mean, it can be cultural, it can be historic, it can be an amenity affecting the public. I like the idea that that will always honor the legacy of Paul W. Litchfield.
Can we have that added?
You can add whatever you like.
Do you guys like that, that language, Kenny? I like it.
From, from.
Andrew?
From a legal.
I like it. I like it too.
Good, from a legal, what are we gonna say?
From a, from a legal perspective, my question would be, how do you define the legacy? Doesn't, nobody will ever challenge that. I, I would like our charter to reference the person who was the founder of our community.
So we would say, "The city shall maintain ownership of the La Loma Homestead property and preserve it as a social, cultural, and historical amenity benefiting the city and community of Litchfield Park, and honoring."
And honoring or preserving the legacy of Paul W. Litchfield.
And honoring and preserving, or just honoring?
Either one, honoring or preserving.
Honoring the legacy of.
Paul W. Litchfield.
Paul W. Litchfield, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I added, "And honoring the legacy of Paul W. Litchfield." You'll never have.
Is that going to put any restrictions on the city, though, in terms of what they can do?
No, no.
Okay, good, I like it.
Yeah.
Anybody, anything else on it, anybody else? So we'll just keep moving through that, Section Five, Six, and Seven. Moving into Article Ten on the Ethics, we talked a little bit about that earlier, cleaning that up.
So, Section Two, I, I, I don't have any suggestions here, just however you wanna clean this up, but Section Two talks about a person appointed to office, in, in Paragraph A, a person who seeks appointment in Paragraph C, but in B and D, it just says, "No person shall knowingly, willfully solicit or assist," and like, like we have control over every person in the world. I mean, I think you need to qualify who that person is that you're talking about, in, in B and D. And, and E, nope, oh no, E says, "Any person who holds compensated appointment." But look at D, "No person shall knowingly or willfully," I think it, that one, B and D are just missing that language that are in the other paragraphs, kinda qualifying what persons you're talking about. So however you wanna handle that, I don't have any suggestions, I just. Does that sound right?
Suzanne?
Is it, are they talking about the person on the other end of the contract? Is that what B and D is designed to address?
Yeah, it would address not just appointed or city employees, but it would address anybody trying to influence those individuals. So, for example, B, regarding any test, certification, or appointment, "No person shall willfully make any false statements, certificate, mark, rating, or report, or any manner, commit to attempt or commit a fraud preventing the impartial execution of the personnel provisions, rules, and regulations." So that not only applies to.
Right, okay, so maybe that one, so look at D, look at D and C.
And then D, "No person shall knowingly or willfully solicit or assist in soliciting any assessment, subscription, or contribution for any political party of political purpose to be used in conjunction with any city election from any city employee."
To me, this just means, yeah, yeah.
Okay, if you're good with that, just leave it.
I like it. Are we good on that?
Yes.
Essentially, you're getting to, like, interference, right?
Okay.
So, anything else on Article Ten, Ethics?
I just wanted to.
Suzanne?
Oh no, I'm sorry, nothing on Ethics.
Okay, Article Eleven, Elections. Think we're good on that, coin flip, tiebreaker?
Yeah.
Article Twelve.
Just so we're clear, that Section Six will be modified to say that.
The fall.
Such, such elections shall occur in the fall.
Yes, Section Six.
Yeah.
So it'll read, "Elections to the office of mayor and council shall be held in even number years on date specified by state laws, semicolon, such elections shall occur in the fall."
Anything else on that?
I'm sorry, I have a mulligan, thank you. Can we go back to the substantial interest piece that we talked about earlier? I just wanna make sure that I understood that. So, as it's written in the first one, bef, before we talked about the substantial interest, is the second one, where it refers to state statute, that seems to be a wider net, right? And that wider net includes all of the things that are in the three percent, five percent share. That includes all of that, I just wanted to make that clear.
For example, so the way I have this revised, just says substantial interest shall have the meaning as defined in state statute, and then state statute defines substantial interest as any non-speculative pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest. And then state statute further defines remote interests, and there are essentially twelve items that qualify for remote interests, such as a non-salaried officer of a non-corp, nonprofit corporation, a landlord or tenant of the contracting party, an attorney of a contracting party, a member of a nonprofit cooperative marketing association, the ownership of less than three percent of shares of corporate, a corporate-for-profit, and that's where that corporate language is in there as well.
Thank you.
Then it also talks about the recipient of public services generally provided by an incorporated city or town. So it's, it lists and defines what a, what a remote interest is. So it does make that substantial interest much broader than, than the language that was already, that was in there.
Thank you, I apologize, thank you.
Anything else? So we're gonna move into Article Twelve, Thirteen. Article Twelve, Article Thirteen. Anybody have anything? Article Twelve, Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen. These are ones that's a pass, in the past, we've gone through relatively quickly. We got rid of Article Fifteen. Anything on Article Sixteen?
Just.
We just changed it.
City Attorney, tell me if this is inconsistent, in Section Five of Article Fifteen, tell me when you're ready. Ready? Okay, it says, "Any violation of this charter shall be deemed a misdemeanor," blah, blah, blah. Talks about what the violation and what the penalty is, but then in Article Ten, Section Five B, it says, "The council shall prescribe by ordinance penalties for willful violation of this article of charter." So in this, it says, "The council shall prescribe," and here it says, it's pretty specific, "Any violation of the order shall be deemed a misdemeanor," so are those consistent?
They are, essentially, this is what's considered the general penalty provision for the, for the charter. If, if there isn't a specific penalty that's defined or described in, in an ordinance.
So, okay, so this is, "Any violation of this charter, not identified elsewhere in the charter, shall be," right? So, okay, so as long as you're fine with that, that this one says, "The council shall prescribe the penalty," and this one says, "This is the penalty."
We can put in, "Any violation of this charter or any city ordinance not otherwise designated."
That seems consistent, since somewhere else it already talks about how penalty will be identified, okay.
Good, are you good with that, Suzanne?
Yes.
Anything else on that, Kenny? Article Sixteen, Succession of Government. Article Seventeen, any other discussion at all? Does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the document as is now, this current draft, to go back to legal, and then be available for us to review again for a final vote? Is there anybody that wants to make that motion? Or the, the public meeting? Do we need to pass this, the changes now to get back to you, to be available for the public meeting, or do?
If you wanna make a motion to approve the changes that have been discussed.
Yes.
I've made those changes, so those will be available immediately tomorrow, so that you guys will have those, and that way, if you, you have a good amount of time between tomorrow and the public meeting, if, and again, if there's any additional changes or suggestions or thoughts that you have between then and that, and the.
Yeah, this is not for the final vote, this is just for that. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I just wanna understand what you just said, if, if anybody sees the draft that you sent out, the updated draft, and they have changes, we're not gonna meet again before that public meeting. Right, so I can't call you individually and say, "I'd like you to change the following," right?
No, but that public meeting will be another meeting like this, to where you can make changes.
Yes.
Can they, can they contact, like, myself or the Vice Chair?
Yeah.
If he gets the, the edit, the draft back from you, he sees something on there that he has some concern, can he contact me, then I can at least.
I would only refer you to the minutes and say, "What did the board tell you to do?" If I think what's in there is different than what was talked about tonight, I would say, "Maybe you should review the minutes and see." I'm not gonna do that, I, I just wanna make sure I understand, we're not going to meet as a group before the public meeting, right?
No.
Okay.
But if somebody gets the edited version back, and they have a concern, and they have a question, they can come to. to, they can contact the city or they can contact me?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we can get back to them, okay? So does somebody want to make a motion then to approve the current edited version for further review during the, the open meeting? The pu- open public meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'm seconded.
Okay, is there any, any further discussion?
As long as my finance is in there, Joe.
All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes?
Can I ask a question? What about the motion, the public meeting?
Yeah, that's next, that's going to be the next, we can go to that, we can go to that next item on the agenda. Yeah, what was your question?
Is that, do we need to make a motion to set that up if that is now on the schedule?
It's currently scheduled on January tenth at six o'clock in the Wigwam Resort.
At Seacham Hall.
At Seacham Hall.
There was talk about a postcard going out.
There was talk about a postcard going out.
That can't go out until the twenty-sixth, once the, we finalize and sign all the documents, and then that postcard would go out. So our next meeting is the public input meeting. Actually, there was also an, I, before we get back to that, there was an agenda item, approval of a press release. Suzanne, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, Sonny's good. It was in the agenda that got sent out. Have you all had a chance to read the press release? It's nothing like earth shattering. But it's just.
Comment.
One, of course, it opens up by saying Litchfield Park, Arizona, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Before it's released, they would put the current date that it's sent out. But also in here, I think it should say as far as what's going to be happening at the meeting. It says, after such publication, another election will be held, and so on, so on, so on, so. Could we put something in there that the proposed charter, in other words, the proposed charter will be discussed. In other words, people want to know, like if they want to, in other words, we're going to say, why is there a charter? In other words, in here, the, the question of why we have a charter will be discussed, or why we're proposing a charter.
Sonny, can you pass that down really fast?
Yeah.
Who put together this press release?
Matthew, and it was also, also run through, through legal. The, the issue is, is the press release is coming from the city. So we can't advocate one way or another for or against.
No, but the question of why we want to, I mean, that'll be something that would be, people will ask, why do we need a charter?
It says, during the meeting, the board will review the current working draft of, of the proposed city charter, and a presentation will be given. The meeting will be recorded and posted to the city's YouTube channel the following day. There will be a first paragraph, there will be a public input meeting for the draft city charter being developed by the Litchfield Park Board of Freeholders on Wednesday, January tenth.
I just thought of a sentence of why, in other words.
Question about the, the last press release, and it was released by the city. You know, obviously, we, we, none of us looked at it. On the independent, yeah, and it was confusing to people that knew what was going on. It quoted that the city manager was going to have all these working groups, and, and obviously, we weren't doing it that. I think if we're going to have a press release, we should be accurate if the city's going to put it out.
May I make a suggestion?
Susan.
If you look at the press release, there's also a link in there that says, city charter, facts, questions. And then you click on that, and it says charter city FAQs. What is a charter city? What are some of the other charter cities? Why would a city or town want to be a charter city? So that document, I think, answers, or speaks to the why.
That's what I remember.
When I was getting my signatures, I actually laminated this and took it with me, because every person wants to know why. And there's not a short answer for why.
Okay.
So my question is, who, who's going to be doing this press release? And you said the city of Litchfield's limited in what they can put in?
Well, just from a, from a legal perspective of advocating for or against the passage of the ultimate charter. We, we're already past the point where the, the, the voters have already approved proceeding with a charter form of government, elected the board of freeholders. So this had, this was edited. There was some language that, that we suggested be removed that was favorable towards the, the voting and passage of the charter. We just want to make sure that it, it complies with what the, the requirements are, so it's, it's generally generic as to information only.
For this public meeting?
Right, yeah.
That's fine. Okay, is there any other discussion on that?
One thing, I know it's not in there already, the mention of the city's YouTube channel, a link to that, so anybody could look at some of the meetings that you had, that kind of thing. Include a link to the, to the channel.
It's on there. Yeah.
I think we have to have a vote, somebody has to make a motion for us to approve this press release? Yes. Okay, so does somebody want to make an approval for the press release with the proper date and time? And that date would be on January tenth at six P M?
This is the date that it's issued.
I see what you're saying. Okay. So there's, there is a motion on the floor, who made that motion? Sonny, it's been seconded by Ann. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes? The next thing on the agenda is just public input meeting discussion on how we're going to do that. My understanding with the city, they were going to, you actually were going to have some slides or something available? A PowerPoint or something available at that meeting? Is that right?
The question is, who prepares that presentation? Like, we've mentioned it in the press release, so who's preparing that presentation? Is it us? Is it?
Staff.
Staff.
Yeah, I, I generally prepare a lot of the city's presentations. Wants to work together on it, or I can take it over, however.
I'd be happy to help, but can I as a?
We'll, we'll help, and then I think Suzanne and I kind of can work as well and look at that. The only topic on this public input, we'll, we'll have, there'll be a presentation, some word of, some of the frequently asked questions that came on that. The city will help us with that presentation. We'll open it up to public comments. I guess I will have to run that meeting in Robert's rules. Is that right? Yeah.
And there's something that comes up during the meeting, then, you know, you can work with.
Well, my plan was to take questions, and then if there's people on the committee that are more appropriate to answer that question, I'm going to have them. If somebody has something that talks about history or something in the city, I'm going to have Sonny answer that question. Or if Sonny raises his hand and says, I want that question, then it's yours.
I do have just a bones of kind of, because you guys are going to put something together. I, I just thought, like, the first thing on the PowerPoint should be the background. In other words, how did we get here? Cover that, there was an election, there's fourteen people worked on it. And then what does being a charter city mean to the city, and then what does it mean to the citizens? In other words, this is kind of an outline.
So we're going to have, Sonny will present, you can be the person that presents those.
No, no, I'm just pressing an outline.
I'll make a motion for that.
Then the third thing would be, what is proposed in the charter that is different from how we've been operating currently? And you just have to hit the high points of things that we changed, like term limits, for one thing. We, like, we don't have any. Age of being on the council, certain.
Bullet points.
Bullet points of things that were major changes that we aren't doing currently. And then the last thing would be questions, or, and then next steps, letting them know that there'll be an election and.
I like it, Sonny.
In other words, that would be an outline, and I would not have questions as you're presenting. I would have questions after the presentation.
And they have to sign in to speak, they have to, just like any other.
Kenny?
I, I would say also, I, I love everything you've put in that outline, stressed the point that, that the draft is not finished. This is where we are in the draft, and your input will be considered. We're meeting one more time before the final charter. So whatever input you give tonight could affect the final charter.
Sonny, is there any way that you can put those down and then have them emailed to, or Gmail'd out to the city? Perfect. Good, and then we'll have an opportunity to review that, myself and Suzanne, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you as well. And, and, and well, actually, everybody on the committee will have opportunity to see that outline, is that right?
Once we run it through, get the draft, get it to you and Suzanne, and then once we've got a fairly finished version, we can have Terry send it out to everybody before it becomes published or finalized.
And. Talking about for the, for this, for the what, the input meeting? The list of things we're going to go for, perfect.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think it is appropriate for you to lead the meeting and kind of be the.
I'll be, I'm ready.
Handle the PowerPoint.
I just need to have the, the signal from the attorney when he gives me the like, you know.
Well. I think it's, I think there should be a discussion of whether all fourteen people are up there for some reason, or just who should be.
I think all, I think we all need to be up there.
I think you all sit up there just like you do as a, as an elective board. So it's kind of like how a, a work session of a council meeting is handled, where you have the, the council sitting there, and you go through the presentation, you identify those specific key issues that you talked about, and then you have a, a call to the public discussions, questions. You could even go through, you know, if you wanted to, go through each section individually to give an overview as to what the different sections provide for. Totally up to you guys how you want to.
I think a brief, a brief presentation on that.
I just think we have to be, I'm sorry, Suzanne, we have to be careful not for it to be like a free for all, all of a sudden where everybody's going, oh, I know, I don't, I don't agree with that. You didn't discuss this, you didn't discuss that. I mean, has to be pretty clear what this meeting's all about, where it can take some input, but it's not a debate, and, because this could go on for hours.
We won't let it.
Well, we have to have a plan.
We will.
Yeah.
So we're going to get, Sonny's going to get that in back to the, she's picking up that stuff from the city.
Just because it's not final.
We'll put together a plan, Suzanne?
I have a couple of questions about the timeline for all of this. I know that our input meeting is on the tenth. When does the draft go out to the public? Like, when do we make it available for the public to review?
The draft of the charter?
Yes.
There was discussion with regard to that, whether we would make it available online, a link or something, but we don't want to cause confusion as to this is a draft, or this is the proposed charter.
So maybe not at all?
We wouldn't do that at all, or what we may have available is have, have the charter, the draft available at the meeting if they want to see the provisions, the specific provisions, but I think that's part of the, the presentation is going through the different sections, identifying what they you know, an overview of the different sections.
Isn't that the idea, idea behind the postcard too, then, that this gets sent out, and then they can come and look at the charter after it's been submitted?
That's, that's why I was wondering how, what's going to bring the public to come to this meeting, unless they have already had a chance to review the charter? That's, that was just my, my thought.
Well, again, the concern is, we don't want to publish something on the city's website that's not a, that's a working draft or not a, a final document.
I thought that when we talked about that with Terry, she said there was going to be opportunity, they could submit comments back and get to information.
Maybe you guys could give us clarification on, or give the chairman clarification on that.
So.
The reason why I asked that question, though, is because I want to then back into when we can expect the draft that we've approved tonight to come back to us, kind of just to make sure that all the changes have been, been made as we discussed, so that we could make it available to the public, and so that we can start the presentation for the meeting.
Did you get that, Joe?
Most of it.
I want a date of when we'll get the draft back from you with all the changes we made, and then if it is decided to go to the public when it goes to the public.
I can have the draft with the changes we discussed today. I can have that to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
And then.
As far as, but you're saying, this being available to the public for review, that's the the problem there, that's an area that we haven't clarified.
And that was the, and it was just a, it was a discussion and concern that was, was raised with, with, with Matthew as to whether we posted on the city's website for review prior to the meeting as to whether we continue to treat it as a working document within just the meetings and not publish anything until we have a final version, which is the proposed version for the election. But you, you want to get input and you want to get comments.
Well, I think that's what the open forum is for.
So in my mind, I'm thinking it's marked with draft, and then it's like we're, we're having a comment period.
Correct.
That ends on the tenth with our public meeting, and after that, nobody can make any comments, because on the eleventh, we're going to approve the charter to go to the governor. Hopefully.
Is that, is that the? Yes, it's still a draft at the public input meeting. And then after that meeting, we will have a final meeting where we'll have to have, what, everybody will have to be there and sign it, wet signatures, and that will be the, and then we're done.
So based on what you and Suzanne just said, we're talking about posting the current draft, stamped draft, either on the city's website or linked in that publicity template that says, if you want to see a, a link to the current draft, click here.
Yeah.
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 Now, I could see some, I mean, you could play both sides of that, like, the down, the downside of doing that is, we're, you know, there are people that could come very organized and, you know, have very compelling opinions on this thing versus this thing, and it could cut. I mean, I think we have to be prepared for that if we post it versus not post it, but then at the same time, you want people to have a little bit of time to digest the information as well, so that, I think there are pros and cons to posting it.
I think you've hit a good point, and we want, I think, and I'm not sure, but the agenda that night, we should not be taking a, action to amend the charter that night, to amend the draft that night. We're taking public input, and the next day, we're going to meet. So even if people come very organized with a very compelling argument, the best we can say is, thank you, we will take that into consideration in our next meeting. So they're not trying to convince us that night to make that change, right? So we, we are not going to have action on that agenda item, I don't think, to make changes to the draft that night.
Just to accept the comments.
And they can come, I like the idea that people actually read it and come prepared with a lucid argument of why it's bad. That's much better.
So then we'll just have to have, make sure that that's available.
Add back a provision into the, into the.
Press release.
Into the press release.
It's a draft, and then the watermark will have draft on it.
And then we'll make sure that it's clearly watermarked, working draft.
We can make that clear at that meeting.
Much better getting the comments at that meeting than after the draft is finalized, we've broken up, and all we have left was an election, and people are out there lobbying to vote no because of this, and we haven't addressed the issue.
So do we need to make any action on the public input meeting right now?
Well.
We've, we've got direction as to how the, how the board wants to handle that meeting, and with how to set up the presentation.
Any other, any, any other comments? The only thing I would say, it's, it's going to be imperative that everybody be at that, that tenth meeting, and also the eleventh for the final signature.
One other question, so when will, so if you send us the draft tomorrow, what is our drop dead date for when we want to have the draft posted on the city website, so that they have time to read it and internalize it?
Do you guys want to have time between when you get it tomorrow and when it goes on to the website? Well, I would just suggest that it goes on the website, because even if, if you do, even if, if you have questions or comments on it, we can't make any changes, because we're not going to have another meeting.
Well, now I have to make sure that Article seven. Well, now I have to make sure that article seven is all situated. That's the only thing.
You'll have, uh, we'll, how about we do a week before they put it out there?
After the meeting, I will show you.
I will, okay.
My, my saved copy.
All right, Joe.
Any, any other business?
The only thing I have to comment on is once it's all prepared, obviously, and I'm sure you're going to want this. Is that you get together with this PowerPoint and go over it and make sure you're comfortable with the way the PowerPoint is put together. So it'll flow when you're presenting it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be coming to you ahead of time.
I'll be happy to.
Yeah. Great.
Sunny's going to give the history and Suzanne's going to give the ethics and taxation.
Definitely on that. So any other, any other discussion?
I have a question for Joe. Should we be posting this on our social media, our personal social medias?
We can promote, have people coming to the media.
What I will do is once I see that, that the press release revised with the FAQs and whatever on there, I will copy that and blast it out.
Copy it and post it as long as you're just copying and posting it. I would just avoid any comments or online discussions and avoid. If you're Facebook friends with any other members of the, the board and stuff, make sure that you're not creating a, uh.
Have you already addressed the council members whether they can come to this presentation?
Uh, we haven't had a discussion, we haven't had a council meeting, but, uh, totally up to them if, if they want.
The only action they take on this is to canvass the vote, right?
Right. They, they have no, no official say or, or input.
So does that mean you can have a quorum of council members because it's not going to be on a future agenda?
We can, but if, we'll have Terry reach out to the council and if there's likelihood of a proposed quorum, we would still acknowledge. Post that there may be a, there may be a majority of the council.
I just think some of them might be interested, even as citizens just showing up and getting.
It's kind of like, we, we still kind of do that for like citywide events and stuff. If we anticipate there may be a, a quorum of the council, we'll go ahead and post it anyways, just to cover our bases.
Anything else?
Chuck? I'm, I'm assuming too that the press release will be sent out to the media contact list as well.
Yeah.
For, for it, yeah.
So they get the right story this time.
Paige will verify that.
It'll be published in the morning.
Any, any, anything else? Anybody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Um, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
A second?
I'll second.
Ann, any further discussion? Great. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.